While the board members could please return to their seats.
Mr. Fishers.
Okay, Mr. Orde, you ready? You ready? Okay.
Okay.
Would you like to introduce yourself and members of the party at the table, please?
Yes, my name is Ronald Orde, I'm the project attorney for the ICC. Where I will on the project architect or show for architecture.
Robert Carey representing the ICC.
Paul Tully with the ICC.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Interestingly, in listening to some of the speakers, some of them raised these issues about the jurisdiction of the ZBA to hear this case. And interestingly, that's what this case actually is all about. Not so much about your jurisdiction to hear the case, but about what the jurisdiction of the HLPC is in this matter. And some people have talked about the expertise of the HLPC members with respect to what their legislative task is. We don't argue with that. But what we're going to present tonight and try to demonstrate to the board tonight is that several of the HLPC members strayed from their statutory limitations and considered factors outside of their authority to make the wrong determination in denying the PNA. One thing I also want to mention, which is an interesting aspect of this case, is this is a case of first impression. I was actually unable to find another case really in the Hudson Valley or certainly Elster County where this issue has come up. Obviously, that's because most municipalities in the area don't have Landmarks Preservation Law. Most of the case law emanates from New York City where there's a Landmarks Commission that's active. I did cite a case from Ithaca, New York that involved Cornell University that we'll talk about briefly. And there was some case law out of Rochester, New York. So this is really a case of first impression here. Our role, our desire here is not to attack the mission of the HLPC. But I think it's very important for everyone in the room to understand that as an applicant, we have rights too. This is a private precinct property. We're allowed to develop it within the code, which we are doing. We're also would expect to go before all the various agencies, the ZBA, the Planning Board, the HLPC, and be subject to the jurisdiction of those particular agencies. If an agency goes outside their jurisdiction, we're aggrieved, and that's why we're here tonight. As far as the comments made by some members of the public about whether or not the CBA has jurisdiction, believe me, we enjoy your company, but we don't want to be here tonight either. This was not voluntary. We were directed by the city through its decision, the HLPC's decision, that this was the first stop along the way to whatever else is going to happen in terms of resolving the issues in this case. So we did not make the law that brings us here today. We have looked at the law very carefully, and I think on balance, we agree that we are required to exhaust all of our administrative remedies before we bring in Article 78. So it was incumbent upon us to be here tonight because there is reference in this city zoning law with respect to a denial of a PNA, Preservation Notice of Action, I could call it a PNA for short, is that this board does have the right to approve or disapprove the decision of the HLPC in that regard. In my brief, I did cite some of the statutory law upon which we are relying on to be here tonight. And this board does have broad authority under the zoning law. The Board of Appeals shall have all the powers and duties prescribed by law and by this chapter. That's 40554 of Kingston zoning law. When you have a reference like that genetically to by law, that includes the state law pursuant to which our local zoning laws are created, the authorities delegate. And under the state law, clearly this Board of Appeals can reverse, affirm, wholly or partly, or modify the order, requirement of decision, interpretation, so on and so forth, that in its opinion ought to have been made in the manner by the administrative official charged with the enforcement of such ordinance or local law, so on and so forth. So we're comfortable in being here tonight. We feel it was incumbent upon us to exhaust our administrative remedies. Whatever decision this board makes, we will abide by. And then, of course, either of the parties has the right to go onto an Article 78. And we'll let the judge decide whether or not there was some type of procedural error. Okay, I just wanted to get that out of the way. By the way, the main treatise on zoning law in the state of New York is by Patricia Saltkin. And I'll read one sentence from it that certainly, and there's other places in this treaty that reference this, but I think here it makes it pretty clear that it's not unusual for a ZBA to have authority to hear or make an interpretation such as the case. By the way, this is not a variance application. I think Mr. Roden was a little confused about some of the requirements. We're not here for variance. This is for interpretation as to whether or not the HLPC acted within their jurisdiction. It says here in Saltkin on section 11A04, and your counsel can double check this for you, relief from a commission's decision on either side of an issue may be sought, and a commission, I'm talking about Landmarks Commission here. Relief from a commission's decision on either side of an issue may be sought in an Article 78 proceeding once all administrative remedies have been exhausted or no jurisdiction for a Board of Appeals exists. So here, we think there's sufficient language in your local zoning law to give you the jurisdiction to hear this case tonight. That's why we're here. If we're wrong, the courts will decide. We don't have an issue with that. Our real issue here is with the substance of this case. And if I may, I decided rather than ad lib, if you can all open up my memorandum of law that I had submitted, I'm just going to run through it as quickly and efficiently as possible. And I'll ask all of you to please read it carefully. Ask me any questions. Oh, no, it's the thicker document. It's entitled on the front page, Memorandum of Law. Yeah. And by the way, attached to that package was the transcripts of the HLPC meeting, which we had made by a court reporting service so that everybody could actually see the actual words of the HLPC members rather than relying on hearsay and opinion. So I think I just covered this jurisdictional issue that was raised with respect to this CBA's authority to even hear this case, so we'll go past that. Now, one thing that's important in trying to make a determination, of course, your counsel will go through this with you, I'm not trying to lecture you, but just cover my bases here to try to lay this out in an organized fashion. One of the key things here, because this is a case about jurisdiction, and I know that it can be a very boring topic for people, and sometimes it's hard to understand, but a couple of the speakers here spoke eloquently about jurisdiction and the importance of it. And the real key important issue here with jurisdiction is if you're before a particular border agency or even in a court, they can't just hear any case. The family court doesn't hear murder trials. The Supreme Court doesn't hear other types of cases. So every court has its specified jurisdiction which don't hear a particular matter. And that's very cute. So how do you determine, and what's the legal standard, if such an agency or court has gone off the rails, or has acted or based their decision not on the criteria under the law that they're supposed to, or not on actual factual basis, but they've acted arbitrarily egregious? And this is hugely important when you're thinking about what you have to do. And so this is case law that can't be disputed, it's pretty much a standard stock language, but it's real. These are cases. And the standard of review in these types of matters is whether an action is arbitrary or egregious when it is taken without sound basis in reason or regard to the facts. That's a matter of Resto versus State Department of Motor Vehicles, appellate issue, second part. An agency's determination, oh, by the way, I'm on page four. I'm sorry. Reading from that first paragraph. And I started in the middle of that first paragraph under standard of review, where it says, "An action is arbitrary and egregious." The next sentence says, "An agency's determination is deemed arbitrary and egregious if it has evaluated the facts using a standard that deviates from that which is expressly set forth in the statutes and regulations. And such a deviation betrays a lack of sound basis and reason for the determination." I think that's at the heart of the legal issue here and how you make your determination as to whether the HLPC did act without a sound basis in law and arbitrary and egregious it. And we will try to demonstrate that for you by using excerpts from their own words, from the transcripts, and some of the legal issues that are raised in the memorandum of law. Now, also importantly, if you flip to page five, it starts off with our argument. The first sentence there says, "The HLPC's limited role in this matter must be viewed within the larger regulatory framework of which the HLPC roles as a ministerial part." And I'll get back to the ministerial part in a minute, because there's some confusion as to where the HLPC sits in this regulatory scheme. For example, your role is quasi-judicial in this hearing tonight. That's where you sit in the regulatory scheme. We'll talk about the HLPC's role. Now, so there are other agencies that fit within the regulatory scheme. First of all, on top of everything is the zoning law itself, and that really dictates, you know, we're a nation of laws, not men, as the old saying goes. We rely on the laws to determine legal issues, not the opinions of individuals or the desires of individuals. In this regulatory scheme, for approval of this project, which has been a long ordeal for us, we have gone before the Planning Board. We went through an extensive secret review. We are subject to the concepts set forth in the city's comprehensive plan, applicable case law. You know, interestingly, when you talk about the Planning Board's jurisdiction, if we're going to get into the topic of jurisdiction, let me read from the code. This is directly from the code in the section that deals with the Planning Board's site plan review authority. "Objectives: In reviewing site plans, consideration shall be given to the public health, safety, and welfare, the comfort and convenience of the public in general, or the residents or users of the proposed development and of the immediate neighborhood in particular, and the appropriate conditions and safeguards may be required to further the expressed intent of this chapter." Okay, that's the Planning Board's role. I read on it, "That the site plan, the Planning Board should ensure that the site plans in conformance with such relevant portions of the comprehensive plan of the city that may be in existence." So it's not the HLPC's job to stray from these factors that are considered by the Planning Board, or to supersede the Planning Board's jurisdiction. Otherwise, we'll have a collision of agencies and nothing will get done in the city. "That the design of all structures is compatible with that of surrounding structures. Compatibility shall be determined by a review of proposed use of materials, scale, mass, height, color, texture, and location of the structure." That's the Planning Board's purview, not the HLPC's. Let me take a quick break and read from the transcripts, because I think I'll try to attach each excerpt to the legal point I'm trying to make. One of the members on page 43 of the transcripts, which attaches an exhibit, if you want to flip to that page. Well, I'll let you flip, because I know that these page numbers are correct. But if you look, it's Exhibit G of the package. If you go to page 43, one of the members, Ms. Melvin, and by the way, I want to clarify, none of this is personal. We're not picking on any particular HLPC member. We know they take their job seriously and appreciate the job that they do, but we have to go through this and talk about the action statements they made, because the relevance of the statements go to the heart and shows the basis of how they analyzed their very limited role. For example, and I just read to you what the Planning Board's role is. Ms. Melvin says, "Can I say one thing in response to your question about the change in the neighborhood and the other buildings that are adjacent or within sort of a visual space of this building? I think it's, to me, I see a sense in that area that it's moving towards residential. Even the synagogue and other projects in the area seem to be moving at least on that, on that street scape to residential or mixed use with a residential component." Well, hold on a second, right there. That is not for the HLPC members to be considering. That is, that's what the zoning district is about. They shouldn't be considering comprehensive plan issues or land use issues. They're not planners. They're supposed to be only considering the historic aesthetic impact of the building in the neighborhood, not whether it's residential or not. And I think that it's difficult for me, this is interesting. Next she says, "And I think that that's the difficulty for me, that the program that the ICC will have, which is purely, you know, appropriate to an Irish cultural center or to any cultural heritage institution, it's going to tie in well with the facade to the street scape that is on West Strand and is more commercial and is more mixed use." Not supposed to be talking about use. They're not the ZBA or the Planning Board. She goes on, but it's going, she stops, "The scale of it and the sort of comparison of usage, it's hard for me to reconcile on this side that actually faces Beale Street." Ms. Melvin doesn't have to reconcile the issue of uses. That's outside of the HLPC's purview. If we go, if we go on to page 45. Mr. Baer says on page 45, "I guess the," and by the way, I'm just reading for Baer, "I guess the, this, this is the root of everyone harping on scale and size, so much because a little bit goes a long way in reducing it to feel more comfortable with your neighbors." The comfort of the neighbors is an irrelevant factor for the HLPC to consider, completely irrelevant. That is an issue that is covered by SECRE, that's covered by the Planning Board, and the law. It's not within the HLPC's purview. On page 133, and I really think this quote says it all. If you look at page 133 again, Mr. Baer, again, not picking on any individual member of the HLPC, just making our point to make our case. "The feel of it in relation to its neighbor, every building has. It's not just the size and the shape and the proportion, it's the overall and how it is. It's just, you know, it's a friendly neighborly thing. You want to please your neighbors." So I then ask him in the transcript, "Is that the standard by which you are making this determination?" Mr. Baer responds, "I think that's buried in our criteria that we're supposed to pay attention to this year." Well, I disagree. That's not the criteria for the HLPC to take these things up. They're not burdened with making considerations about the impact on the neighbors. They're burdened with the impact of the aesthetic and historic impact of the building in the landmark district. Those other things are outside of their jurisdiction. And we'll come back, there'll be other excerpts. So just to go sweep back now to our argument, also on page five, going back to the memorandum of law. Towards the bottom, I discuss that the HLPC does not have discretionary authority to approve or deny a project development that is in compliance with the zoning law. That's the law. That's not just my opinion. And we'll demonstrate that to you. "In fact, the ICC Cultural Center is a legal, as of right use, in compliance with all the applicable zoning regulations and bulk requirements. The issue of a PNA is a ministerial act with very limited discretion. The HLPC does not have discretionary authority to alter, modify, or limit the uses allowed in a specified zoning district, nor modify or limit the bulk regulations for such zoning district, including the building size, number of floors, building height, except as it's limited in relation to certain neighboring structures, of which, by the way, our building is lower than the neighboring structures or setbacks." This is all in the law. I'm not making any of this up. If you look at your zoning law, it's very important, I think one of the speakers cited, which I cite on page six, on page six. What I tried to do is set this up in an organized fashion for you to first do an analysis and set forth the zoning law and the other applicable laws, and then get into our application case law and SECRE. So here, if you look at section 405-63, it's on page six of the memorandum of law, right around the middle of the page. First of all, the commission's powers and duties have to be imposed in accordance with the standards set forth in section 405-63. I'm reading that from your code, 405-6181. Now, if you go down to the middle of the page, we start, we can look at 405-63 of the Landmarks and Landmarks Commission section from your code. This is a verbatim copy of your code. Legislative intent, this is hugely important here, the legislative intent. "It's the purpose of this section is to provide for the promotion of the educational, cultural, economic, and general welfare of the public through the protection, enhancement, perpetuation, and preservation of landmarks and landmark districts." The legislative body declares that it's in the public interest to ensure that distinctive landmark and landmark district shall not be injuriously affected. Now, those words may seem a little bit muddled, but there has to be some factual basis to support the contention that our building injuriously affects the neighborhood. Besides, I don't like it. It's too big. What are they going to be doing there? That's not good enough. Also, that the value to the community of those buildings having architectural and historical worth, and there we're talking about pre-existing buildings. Here we're talking about a vacant lot, so this doesn't completely apply, but it has some application. Shall not be impaired. Well, we're certainly not impairing the vacant lot by improving it with the building that we propose. As a matter of fact, throughout the transcripts, if you take the time to read the transcripts, you'll see that for the most part, the members actually supported the architectural design and the project. It was, that's why they voted in favor of those elements in their criteria, in three of the four criteria that they considered. They did not consider the fifth criteria under the zoning code for various reasons, which perhaps we'll touch on, but I do touch on it in the memo, so maybe I'll leave it to you just to read. And then also that the districts may, it says, and thirdly, that the said districts be maintained and preserved to promote their use of education, pleasure, and welfare of the citizens of the city of Kingston and others. Well, this is a cultural center. It's not an atomic energy plant. It's not a discotheque. It's not a bar. The resistance to this project has even surprised me, and I've been doing this a long time, but for some reason, that doesn't seem to be having an impact on everybody in the neighborhood. But that's the law, and this project accomplishes that statutory, I'm sorry, the legislative intent. In 405-63C, "In relation to underlying zoning districts." This is very important. "The underlying zoning districts shall apply within the landmark district as follows," which is saying that zoning law doesn't get superseded by the HLPC's review criteria, that the zoning regulations apply within the landmark and landmark district with respect to limitations on height, except noted above. There is nothing noted above, and I could find actually a distinction. But there is a reference to height in the list of criteria that the HLPC reviews that talks about the height relation to adjacent buildings. And again, our building's lower than the adjacent buildings, so height's a non-issue, a red hammer all the way. By the way, this is a two-story building, by the way, on Beale Street, and a three-story building with most of the first floor embedded in a hillside, which cannot even be seen by the public from outside. You know, if a 16,000 square foot building is a problem in Kingston, then we have a problem with the future of development in Kingston. In C2, "Other provisions of these regulations related to land use shall remain in force." So all the land use regulations remain in force here. They're not superseded by some super authority that the HLPC has. So you turn to the next page, page seven, and we get into the procedure that's set forth in the zoning law, the review process for the issuance of a PNA. And I don't know if I mentioned this at the top, but before this application was submitted in September of 2017, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, there was, a PNA had never been formally issued in the history of Kingston. So the level of scrutiny that we've been subjected to is new, and we think prejudicial and biased. Now, I actually was the one who pointed out the need to issue a PNA to the city during our process, because we wanted to ensure that we were doing everything by the book. We did not want to trip ourselves up with a procedural error. And when I looked at the code and saw that there was a requirement for PNA, I mentioned that I want to go through the process, the full process, subject our project to the full review of the HLPC as long as they follow the law, and to get our PNA issued. And we'll get into what a PNA actually is. So on the top of page seven, the, so I do mention that the HLPC's deliberations in connection with our application for the PNA appears to have been an exercise of first impression, and one in which the HLPC overstepped its authority and subjected the ICC to an elevated and prejudicial and biased level of scrutiny without basis in law fact. Now, if you look, I did cite verbatim, I copied all the sections of the code that I have here, I actually copied with my computer into the memo. So these weren't even retyped. I didn't even want to make a typo. The criteria that has to be considered, there are five criteria. And I won't read those to you now, because you can read this yourself, I won't bore you with this. But they went through the first four and determined that the fifth criteria, which is the difficulty or possibility of reproducing any structure, it followed because of its design, texture, material, position, or detail, didn't apply here. They felt, I believe, that because this wasn't a pre-existing building that was being subject to their review, that didn't apply. But I do think it applies, at least to the extent that we can't be expected to do things that no one else could replicate in the roundabout. I do say that it would be, it is unfair and prejudicial to expect the ICC to have to do things that other applicants don't have to do. So in the transcripts, you'll see there's a lot of concern about what they call the sighting, the location of the building. This is the property that we own, that we bought to develop this site. It's an appropriate site. The architect, the designers did a great job in figuring out a way to put this building into that hillside so it would have the least impact on the neighborhood, that would have minimal floor height, and they accomplished that. So I think number five actually does apply, because we can't be expected to overcome a difficult or impossible task of finding the perfect location that the objectors to this project think we should have. This is private property. We're within the zoning law and developing it the way we are, and we shouldn't be stopped from doing that because somebody decides to go and object to this project for personal reasons, whatever their interest may be. Nowhere in this criteria, by the way, this is key, does it give the HLPC the right to consider the overall scale or size of the building? consider the overall scale or size of the building? Its impact on the neighbors, that is off the table, that is not within the HLPC's jurisdiction. And there's case law now, we'll get to momentarily. They talk about where relevant, they should consider points such as establishing relationships to external features of the building, the immediate neighborhood. External features of the building do not mean size, location, impact on the neighbors, whether or not we have to make everyone happy. No developer makes everyone happy. The building height, relationship to the surrounding buildings, a red hammer, our building's lower, you'll see it in the presentation here. The relationship to nearby roof shapes, our roof shapes are in conformance with every commercial building in the area. We've gone out of our way to put cladding, the roof type elements, to make them less impactful to the neighborhood. The relationship between the width to height of the front elevation, the front elevation is the West Rand Street side of the property, the development, where the main entrance is, this is totally appropriate between the width and the height of a three-story building. There are many buildings, we'll show, throughout the history of the Roundout, that were even torn down in the 1970s, that are bigger and much bigger than this building throughout the Roundout. There were comments made in the transcripts that there's no precedent for a building of this size, that this is a residential neighborhood. This is not a residential neighborhood. This is a mixed-use neighborhood, there has been industry for years in this neighborhood, there are commercial uses throughout the neighborhood. The front entrance of this building runs along, from Broadway, along the West Rand, and comports with the other commercial buildings on the north side of the West Rand, and is in line with them right up the company hill path. Nothing unusual, nothing presidential about this at all. And Bradwill will talk about that a little bit more. The size, proportion, and spacing of openings within the facade and elevations exposed to view, not the size or proportion of the building, the size, proportion, and spacing of openings within the facade and elevations exposed to view. The windows, the doors, so on and so forth. We passed muster on all that, by the way. If you look at their decision on three of those four criteria, that makes German. They were happy with all of it, at least the majority. The rhythm of spacing of the building, the design and placement of entrances and projections, the relationship of materials, textures, and colors, the relationship of architectural details, character, material, color, line, and details, none of this has anything to do with the actual basis for certain members making their decisions to deny the PNA. When we go down to the bottom of page eight. Well, the four criteria that the board, the commission members had considered, criteria number one, that's in the code, was the one in which they decided against the building. And this was the one where it said, "The proposed work will have a negative impact in changing, destroying, or affecting the exterior features of the landmark or landmark district upon which such work is to be done." Where's the factual basis for this? I don't like it, it's too big, it's in the wrong place. Those are not facts that a legal decision is made on. In a court of law, in a quasi-judicial proceeding like this, you need much more of people's personal opinions and impressions to that, to agree with that determination. Remarkably, even though on the four criteria that they made a determination, three of the four were decided in our favor, they determined that the PNA was going to be denied. Well, that was done because certain members voted against issuing the PNA because of personal bias towards the project. And their own words, some of which I just mentioned from the excerpts, clearly support Again, going back to the legislative intent of the code, once they go through those five criteria that they have to make a determination on, you then have to go back to section 405-63, which was on page six of my memorandum, and weigh that against the legislative intent. Remember, the legislative intent is the promotion of the education, cultural, economic, and general welfare of the public, which this project satisfies thoroughly. And whether or not this project injuriously affects the Roundout District. So there's nothing in the transcripts that actually supports that contention. How in the world does this cultural center hurt the Roundout District, except for certain neighbors who are offended by a building that's 16,000 square feet? There are many buildings that is bigger, bigger than this one. And many buildings that were torn down in the 1970s, or whatever the exact concrete is, mistakenly torn down and destroyed a lot of historic landmarks. The Landmarks Law was enacted to protect the community against that, okay? So if they're saying that, you know, they're upset about buildings being torn down, many of which were bigger than this one, I don't understand the resistance to a brand-new building that's gone through many hoops to try to retrieve the correct balance for this landmark district, and that's going to be a cultural center, despite some of the mythology that's reported or commented on in some of the papers, and some of the other comments on Facebook, and so on and so forth. So, the bottom line on page 10, I just talked about how certain members of the HLPC really failed to weigh the evidence, other than personal conjecture, that the Roundout Landmark District will be injuriously affected by the ICC HP Building. Actually, it's going to enhance the value to the community. No evidence that it would injuriously affect the Roundout Landmark District. Okay. So, if we just move on to page 11, I'll get into an analysis of, to hopefully try to assure you, I don't worry too much, about how the jurisdiction of the HLPC is limited. So, first of all, interestingly, under SECRE, which is the State Environmental Quality Review Act, you may not be aware of this, but the issuance of a PNA, or certificate of appropriateness, which is the way a PNA is referred to in other municipalities, same thing, is specifically excluded from SECRE. And there's a reason for that, because the actions of the HLPC are ministerial only. What that means is, they're acting under the auspices of the Building Department, they have specific, limited authority under the zoning code to review and analyze the criteria which I just went through with respect to the impact on historic district from an aesthetic and historic perspective. But not to supersede SECRE. The SECRE review is quite daunting, and by the way, we went through a SECRE review for a year already, and received a negative declaration from the Planning Board, which is the lead agency under SECRE for this project. That is very, very important, because under the law, once a negative declaration is issued, we don't talk about the environmental impacts anymore, okay? You know, you can bring an Article 78 appeal on a negative declaration, but the law right now is that negde. The Planning Board have already gone through all of, a lot of these impacts that the HLPC decided they were going to pick up and try to deliberate on. Maybe they didn't like that the Planning Board had issued a negative declaration, I don't know. But they had no jurisdiction or authority to start conducting a mini-SECRE review themselves. You know, how does this affect the neighbors? The impact on the neighborhood, the size of the building? That's a mini-SECRE review, that's outside the scope of the jurisdiction. I read to you earlier the site plan review language from your own zoning code, where it's the Planning Board that determines the use of materials, scale, mass, height, color, texture, and location of the structure, and the setbacks. By the way, we have a thing called bulk requirements, in every municipality with its own law. We are completely in conformity with every one of the bulk requirements. As a matter of fact, this building could be larger than it is, under the City of Kingston bulk requirements for the zoning district. We made it smaller to try to fit in to the site that we're using as best we could, but by also accomplishing our goal of having this be an actual cultural center, with a small theater in that, for the use by the entire city, by the entire community, to have classes, teaching, so on and so forth. It is, by the way, the HLPC has no authority to make us make the building smaller. But just getting back, so let's look at this section here, starting at page 11 about SECRE. So, my point here is, in considering various environmental factors in his deliberations, which they did, you know, they can call it whatever they want, but you can read their own words, and you'll start seeing between the lines and directly in front of you, the actual statements that are so concerned about the size and impact of the building on the neighbors, that's SECRE, that's site plan review, that's not HLPC review. When they stuck to their limited role, they approved three out of the four criteria. When they strayed from it, they said, "No PNA, we're not giving action, we're not building this thing, it's too big, we're worried about the neighbors." And by the way, we don't take the neighbors for granted, but everyone who lives in this city or any other town or city, when you buy a property next to a commercial piece of property, you can't prevent that owner from developing the commercial property within the zoning requirements and the bulk requirements. You can yell and scream as much as you want, but if you bought that property, it's buyer beware, we have the right to build this building. They have the right to protest, but not to make things up and try to convince the board that we're not entitled to build this, that somehow we're trying to diminish the role of the HLPC. My hope throughout this process is that we don't diminish the role of the HLPC, but we clarify that role. That is very important for the future of Kingston. So, they talked about the impact of the building on its neighbors, including its use and scale, its visual impact from visitors outside of the zoning district completely. They wanted us to drive over the bridge and see how it would look. Potential impacts from excavation of bedrock, completely unrelated to their role, limited role. So, as I say, and you'll see again in the memo, they were engaging in their own SECRE mini-review and site plan review, and it's outside the scope of their jurisdiction. And what's the legal support for that? The legal support for that is the SECRE. In SECRE section 617.5, C19, and your counsel can give you a copy of this, I have it in my memo, I tried to put everything in here, so you have it all, I'm sorry, page 12. If you look at the bottom paragraph of page 12. Now, these are not my words, these are the words of various courts and of the DEC. "The issuance of a PNA or other certificate of appropriateness is a ministerial action for SECRE purposes because discretion for issuance of a PNA or other certificate of appropriateness is circumscribed by narrow criteria." That's also from Salkin, the leading treaties on land use and zoning law in the state of New York. And all the citations are in there. "Under SECRE, the HLPC's jurisdiction is so limited that it cannot be a lead agency or involved agency in any action subject to SECRE." That's SECRE 617.5, C19. "Under SECRE, the HLPC's issuance or denial of a PNA is not even deemed to be an action as that term is defined under SECRE." That's a leading case, 67 Bestry Street Associates, dealing with the case, a challenge under the New York City Landmarks Law, where a group of protesters wanted the HLPC to conduct a SECRE review, and it went up on an Article 78, the court says, "HLPC has no jurisdiction or authority to do a SECRE review." They're not allowed to stray into those areas of the review. And I quote from the case law here, and you can read it yourselves, and it gives an excellent analysis of trying to understand what the scope of the jurisdiction particularly is. So, the key here to understand what ministerial means, is ministerial means that the HLPC lacks discretion to make decisions that, for example, this board can make. This board has some discretionary authorities, as a matter of fact, this board has quasi-judicial authority. That's why you can hear appeals from a decision of a city officer or other agency, in this case, the HLPC. Because the HLPC's role is only ministerial, that's why zoning boards in lots of municipalities do have the right to hear an appeal from their decision, because it's only ministerial. Planning Board has discretion, HLPC does not. Moreover, because, as I mentioned before, the other thing you always have to remember, so not only do they not have any role for SECRE site plan review, under SECRE or under the case law, again, the SECRE review was already completed. Location, size, impact, all already done. We weren't going to the HLPC to hear all of that again. Through the year-long ordeal we went through before then, there were many months where we couldn't get an appointment before then because they did not have a sufficient quorum. By the time we got before then, it was late in the summer, in September 25th, they made this particular decision. And by the way, we worked for many, many hours with CHLPC to make changes to this building. No one on this board should think that that did not occur. They succeeded in making us make some changes, which we did. We're only resisting them, attempting, denying the PNA as a mechanism for forcing us to reduce the size of the building and to relocate, when that's not within their authority to do so. You know, if you look at the 67 Bestry Tennis Association case, at the top of page 14, you'll see a long citation there. And it's very important for you to read it, because it really clarifies how the Supreme Court, N R 78, dealt with this issue of the, what's called the LPC, Landmark Preservation Division, New York City, about their limited authority. And at the end, the last sentence in that paragraph at top page 14, "The LPC is not authorized to regulate matters ordinarily considered in the zoning process, such as the height and bulk of buildings, the area of yards, courts, and other open spaces, density of population, the location of trades or industries, or location of buildings designed for specific uses or the creation of districts for any such purpose." By the way, this case was dealing, I think, with a 51-story building that did get reduced inside by the equivalent of the Planning Board in the city. What's remarkable here is, we're talking about a two-story building on the Abil Street side, a three-story building on the West Rand Street side. If we can't get a three-story building built in Kingston, even in a landmark district, it's very disconcerting. So, rather than focus, also on page 14, so then rather than focus only on the specified factors for determining the historical and aesthetic impact of the proposed building, certain HLPC members focused almost entirely on the building's environmental impact on its neighbors, what they described as the use, location, or sighting, scale, and size of the building, even insisting that the building size be reduced by 25%, and that the building location or sighting was so troubling that when asked how the ICC could address the members' concerns, the response was that they were at a loss as to how to solve the problem of placement of the building. I believe one of these speakers actually cited that in the transcripts, if I'm not mistaken. But, how in the world did they start thinking about those factors? That's outside of their purview. "It's not up to the HLPC to consider the placement of the building on a lot for which the intended use is zoned and the structures are compliant with the bulk and other regulations." That's because the HLPC does not have the authority to insert itself into a SECRE analysis regarding a project that a member may personally object to, nor to supersede the zoning law or private property rights of an applicant for site plan review in a landmark area in the guise of an HLPC review process. The next section goes to the heart of the legal argument about their decision being arbitrary and egregious. We cited a couple of cases, there's the Cornell University case, the only case actually I found in the Third Department, or at least that was relevant. And I won't bore you with all the details, but again, in that case, the Third Department, which is the appellate division for our area of the state, held in favor of Cornell University, which was trying to install a new parking lot in a landmarks district in the City of Ithaca. And there, the court found that the HLPC members had failed to provide any evidence with respect to their objections about the negative impact of this parking lot, when they balanced the purpose of the parking lot for an educational institution against the legislative intent of the landmarks laws, to protect the landmarks district. And I'll let you look through that under oath, it's pretty clear. If you look at page 18, I did include some excerpts from the transcript at September 25th meeting where they deliberated and made their determination to deny the PNA. You know, if you look at page 20, You know, if you look at page 20, you'll see, and you can look through a lot of these excerpts yourself, we have the entire transcript, but another one that jumps out on my page 20 of the memorandum of law, on line 19, about two-thirds down, Ms. Birmingham says, "I think specifically, I go back to especially the adjacent residential buildings, I think it's as interesting, as interesting as a design that it is, is large commercial mass between two residences, it has sort of an uncomfortable feel to it." Well, it doesn't matter. First of all, this building is not quite between, it's between two residential lots, but actually, the building itself is built into the hill on the company called Pathside Lot, and it goes right in line with the existing commercial buildings on, I believe it's the north side of West Strand. Our building is set way back from the Beale Street and has no impact on the residential property to the east. And by the way, in the zoning district, this is a commercial lot, we are allowed to build right up to the property lines. As a matter of fact, that's a requirement in your bulk requirements, you either build right up to the property line, like so many buildings in the roundout and throughout the mixed-use commercial areas of Kingston, you know, they're wall-to-wall, or you can have a six-foot step back, which is what we decided to do, to give some breathing room between the lots for the residential properties. Now finally, you know, there's also a very important component here, on page 22 at the bottom, we provide you with some excerpts from the City of Kingston Comprehensive Plan. Now, this is the new comprehensive plan, and in the comprehensive plan, it does express, you know, the vision for the future development of this city. And in Strategy 10, excuse me, is specifically directed towards the roundout district. And I'm not going to read all this, because you'll be able to read it yourself, but there is no confusion that this project is actually encouraged by the language in the Comprehensive Plan. I find it a little bit baffling how some people would not, would have a comprehensive plan passed in the city and then take a completely contrary perspective to all the hard work that went into drafting the Comprehensive Plan. You know, you look at, in the roundout district, it continues to permit and promote, the first one, Strategy 10, not the first one, but 10.2.5, continue to permit and promote additional cultural and museum uses along the strand. Thank you very much, we agree. You can see a quote there, I underlined, "Generally, the concentration of population and commercial interest in existing mixed-use areas," which this is, "is less environmentally impactful than a sprawling development pattern that invests in remote refill sites." That says, "Don't go far away in a remote location and just build this, stay right in the community, the mixed-used area, you know, especially for cultural or museum use, where people can park there, they can go there, they can also enjoy the restaurants and other retail and other uses in the neighborhood." Objective 10.3, "Encourage additional year-round retail as well as event programming." Thank you, we plan to, if we can ever get this thing built. "Promote additional use of roundout public recreational facilities during cold weather months and encourage area restaurants to participate." You can read the rest yourselves. This, 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 this policy, if you look at the top of page 24, in the, what do you call that?
Volume building?
No, it's not, please.
It's italic.
Italic, I'm sorry. "This policy is intended to increase the viability of the area as a mixed-use core." We had this sit through multiple HLPC meetings where they were so concerned that this was drifting towards a residential use, and we have to keep it a residential use. No, as a matter of fact, that's not within their purview to even consider that. This is in the Comprehensive Plan. If individual members of a board have a personal objection, they should recuse themselves from these types of meetings. In Kingston, we need members of these boards to be objective, to try and put aside their personal preferences and biases, and to try to give an applicant the rights they deserve to come before the board and develop their private property within the scope of the law, which is what we've been doing. So, you know, in conclusion, I'm sorry if I went over my time, I thought it was very important to make these points. We, it's clear that the statements of certain HLPC members demonstrate clearly their misguided effort to expand the role of the HLPC, to be that of the ultimate super overseer of development in Kingston. And I don't say that lightly, and I don't say that to insult the HLPC. Again, we appreciate the hard work that they're doing, but what we need to happen is for the city to have these various agencies understand the scope and magnitude of their jurisdiction, so that actually, one of the key goals of the Comprehensive Plan can be accomplished, and I'll read it to you. Objective 6.2 on page 23, top of page 23, right at the top, these are direct quotes from the Comprehensive Plan. "Objective 6.2, simplify the regulatory programs and protections to ease processing of development approvals involving historic structures." "Strategy 6.2.1, develop procedures to coordinate and streamline review functions by multiple agencies." You can see the problem here, where agencies are bumping into each other, when they should have been. Had the HLPC limited their review to their jurisdiction, we would not be here tonight. "Preservation of valuable historic resources must be ensured while expediting the reviews required by zoning and related laws." "Draw additional visitors to the roundout by leveraging and expanding existing recreational resources." Increase the number of recreational events held by the city for knock-for-profits in the roundout, which we are. So, I think it's clear that the HL, certain HLPC members overstep their ability, they deny a PNA without substantiating with actual facts why this project so egregiously in their minds affects the roundout district. Whenever they did express their concerns about how it impacts the roundout district, they used the raw criteria. They strayed into applying criteria that is the sole purview of the planning board in SECR, to apply it to deny the PNA. On that basis, I am requesting that this zoning board in its decision reverse the decision of the HLPC. And this zoning board has the authority to require the PNA to issue, the HLPC to issue a PNA or issue it on its behalf forthwith. And also, I just will make, well, I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else, anyone else that will be speaking?
Yes, I'll be speaking. My mic works. So, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present this, this project that we strongly believe in and think will be a great asset and amenity to the roundout, to the city of Kingston, and to the Hudson Valley. I was sitting, sitting here listening to the public commentary earlier, which I always appreciate, and also to my colleague Ron Forty, and I couldn't help but think of a person, anecdote that I'll keep extremely short. Growing up in Lexington, Massachusetts, we lived near the center of town, and Lexington, as you know, is a very historic town, it had very strict zoning, it was well-organized and well-run, as I believe Kingston is. And interestingly enough, right across the street from where our house was, we're on the corner of Hastings and Lincoln Street, and on one side, we had Hayden Recreation Center, two very large red brick buildings. One was an ice skating rink, three sides of it were solid brick, up and down, and I spent many, many nights and hockey games playing there. The other was a large building that had a swimming pool, a full basketball court.